A city council meeting, July 20, 2021, calling our closed session at 6:01 PM. Under our closed session, we have two items, or before that, could I please get roll call, Monica?
Roll call. Councilmember Soto, present. Councilmember Moran?
Present.
Councilmember King?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Garcia?
Mayor Aguilar?
Present.
For the record, Mayor Pro Tem Garcia is not in attendance, but his absence is excused.
Thank you, Monica. Under closed session, we have two items, the Conference Labor Negotiator, Jose Antonio Ramirez, City Manager, Employer Organization, Police Superior Employee Association, the Livingston Police Officer Association, the Management Confidential Bargaining Unit, and Clerical Bargaining Unit, and then Performance Evaluations Position, City Manager. At this time, we're going to go ahead and take public comment. At 7:00, we will start a regular council meeting, and then, if needed, go on into our continuation of the closed session. So at this item, any public comment? Just a reminder that public comments limited to three minutes per person.
I'm also hearing.
Okay, can you hear me now? Then I'll start over. Okay, we're good? Four of the members of this council have already had five opportunities to appraise or comment on the city manager's performance. The only difference was the addition of Councilmember Moran. In the last 11 months, 11 months, there was the following: August 18, 2020, performance appraisal; January 19, 2021, appraisal; February 2, 2021, appraisal; February 16, 2021, when the council member's contract was renewed; then, shortly thereafter, on April 20, 2021, another performance appraisal. Now you want to appraise his performance again? Seriously? We know the Mayor Pro Tem put this on the agenda the last time around. Who put it on the agenda this time? And why?
Everything went quiet.
The silence speaks volumes.
For those of you that don't know me, my name is Micah Gallo. I work at Joseph Gallo Farms. I don't know all the details of what's happening. Our concern is for the community. It's obviously important that... This is a time of growth. It's a time of a lot of activity. And when these types of things have happened in the past, it slows down business, it slows down growth, it creates new problems. And we are obviously very concerned about that. And so I wanted to come here and comment that it would be better, in our opinion, for everyone to work together. Obviously, if there's things that need to be looked into, then you look into them. But, you know, we've had a good working relationship with the city manager. We obviously appreciate working with the council and the city of Livingston. And we want things to progress. We want good things to happen here. And it's just very concerning when things like this occur. It's not good, obviously, if everyone with the knowledge and the know-how of how to run this city on a daily basis either can't get along or are removed. Boy, it's really not going to be good. It's really not going to be good for the city. We just wanted to share our opinion about that and our sincere hope. And I know that I'm speaking for my family and all the employees at Joseph Gallo Farms when I say that it's our hope that the city can continue to work together and do what needs to be done during this crucial time. So thank you. Thanks.
My name's Kimberly Lewis, and I'm the District Attorney here in Merced County. And I don't normally appear at city council meetings because it's not my job to be involved in your politics. But it is my job to be involved in the quality of policing within the city of Livingston. And I believe that there's an item on your agenda, which is item number four, which tonight affects the quality of policing within the city of Livingston. So I'd like to offer to you, when you go into closed session, if it is that you need additional evidence or information, I am available to be a witness to you, and you are welcome to call upon me. But if you choose not to, then I state to you that, to the best of my knowledge and ability, your police chief, John Markle, has operated in maintaining the policing within the city of Livingston under the operation of law correctly and precisely. And that is exactly what the District Attorney's Office is looking for in a chief of police. And to the best of my knowledge and experience, your city manager has done his best to counsel you and encourage you and to make sure that you have been guided under the correct operation of law as well. And of course, we always encourage that. So because of that, we stand at the District Attorney's Office behind your city manager, Mr. Ramirez.
Hello, my name is Lam Sylvan. I'm the HR Coordinator for the city of Livingston. Just wanted to say a few words about our city manager. Mr. Ramirez has many fine qualities, but by far, his best quality is the love of the people of the city of Livingston. He advocates for them and considers their best interests as he is making the tough decisions. He is articulate, experienced, and professional, and embodies the attributes needed to be a good leader. Mr. Ramirez never says no to a member of the community that needs to listen, that he needs to listen to. He not only listens, but he takes actions as needed to help. For the reasons I have listed above and so much more, I urge you to consider Mr. Ramirez's contributions to this community when completing his evaluation. Thank you.
Kenneth Abalo, I am a new resident here with my family, just within the last couple of years. And before it begins, I'd like to say that, in God we trust there, that means a lot to some of us, and I'd call on that God now to help us, to watch over our city and to guide us in what's going on. Because having a performance evaluation on someone two months ago and then having it again has to be a rather arduous experience for you. So I'm sorry that the city is doing this to you. It just can't make it very pleasant to work here. I don't agree with it. I think that it makes us look weak, or with a lack of leadership. I'm not sure on what level or who's leading, but it doesn't seem led very well. I don't appreciate it. It's a waste of your time, and what's worse, my time. And I think that we just need to figure out what's going on. If there's something behind the scenes, it needs to be resolved and taken care of so that our city can move forward. These last two years have been a challenging enough time, and we need to come together in a correct manner and speak truth. And I'm speaking truth now. What we're doing to this man and to other city employees who have one-year contracts is just beyond reproach. I think it's terrible. So thank you for your time.
Good evening, council. Here we are again. This is starting to remind me of the movie Groundhog Day. The only difference is, in the movie, it was 6 o'clock in the morning. Here it happens to be 6 o'clock in the evening. This is getting tiresome, guys. City manager Jose Ramirez has been with the city for a long time, and I have known him to do nothing but the best interest of the city. Each and every one of you have worked with him. Just because he tells you something can't be done, there's no reason to be mad about it. Now, I would serve with you guys. I know some of the rumblings. That's fine. It is. I can disclose it. However, I would like to make a suggestion. If Mr. Ramirez is willing to do so, and the council is willing to accept, why don't you just do his evaluation in public? Let's just let the whole city know what the concerns of the council and what the concerns of the city manager. I believe he has that right, and if he's willing to do so, is the council willing to accept that? I know you're not going to answer me, but that's okay. And also, a previous citizen asked, who put this item on the agenda? Why don't you guys, whoever put it on there, own it? Admit it. Tell us who put this item on the agenda. You can remain quiet, but silence is not going to make people happy here. Councilwoman Soto, did you put this item on the agenda? No? Say yes or no. This is not confidential information. This has to be disclosed to the public, I believe. Correct me if I'm wrong, Legal, knowing who put the item on the agenda, it's a right of the citizens to know. Because when we see items on the agenda regarding development, whatever, the person that proposed it, the name's on there. Mayor, when you have put items that make you look good, you said item presented or prepared by the mayor. So let's put this out here. Who put this item on the agenda? Please tell us. Or do I need to go into silent mode for next 30 seconds? Or at least, accept what I've said, work with Mr. Ramirez, and right now, in front of this entire city, tell us that you guys are willing to hold the evaluation in front of the city. You work for us. If he's doing something wrong, we, the citizens, want to support you as well. If he's corrupt or something, let us know. You would have the support of the entire city. Isn't that what you would want? So are you guys going to tell us who put this item on the agenda, or we can just say, you know, they don't want to listen to us? So, Mr. Mayor, did you put this item on the agenda? Councilmember King, did you put this item on the agenda? Councilmember Moran, did you put this item on the agenda?
No, I did not.
Okay. Thank you very much. My time's up. Thank you.
My name is Juan Santana. I recall many times I made a stop in Livingston years ago. Then, the new section of the freeway was completed, and the signal light was removed, and no more stops in Livingston for me. 25 years ago, I bought 20 acres and became a Livingston almond farmer. I retired from my teaching job in Modesto City Schools and moved to what I call now my hometown, Livingston. Soon after, I relocated here, so did my daughters. They are currently raising their children here in Livingston, our hometown. Despite the polarized political situation, we're glad to live in Livingston. We love Livingston, and I would like my grandchildren and future generations also enjoy this nice town that we live in. We have many friends who voted to get the present council persons elected, and we want to see them finish their terms. Our city manager has done a great job for our city. I don't see anything wrong with what he has done since I've been here. The mayor has done a lot of good things in spite of the unjust attacks against his person. The new police chief has been under fire even before he started his job. We cannot allow a handful of people with personal interests to destroy our city council that the majority of people elected. Let us remain united and not destroyed while we have now. Thank you.
Mayor, city councilmen, women. I'm not here to discuss the city manager, so you guys know. My name is Mary McWaters. I am the business agent for AFSMI. I represent our Public Works unit. A lot of you are new. I've never been to meetings since you've been here, so I just wanted to introduce myself to you. I am currently in bargaining. Why our unit is not on your agenda today, I don't know. But we are in bargaining, and there are some issues going on. I'm not going to discuss them right here, but we may be getting to know each other more soon. Thank you.
Mayor Aguilar and members of the council. My name is Russ Winton. I think most of you know me. I want to congratulate you for the last election and getting put on the city council. It takes a lot of work. It takes a lot of reading, and it takes an open mind. And I'm glad that you've stepped forward and have been elected to the council. I don't appear here very often because I love Livingston. I don't have too many complaints. And when I do, I'll single out a councilman and let them know. But I feel safe here. I think we've got a good PD department. We have a good fire department. You know, there are things I would like to see. I'd like to see a couple dog parks. I'd like to see a skateboard or all-wheels facility for kids that are individuals and want to do their own thing and not team sports. And I'd like to see the mayor elected for four years. Electing every two years divides our community. I really think that's, to me, a very important thing. The issues tonight, I don't have much background on. I just know that it makes the city look silly. It makes you, as councilmen, be indecisive. You've been indecisive with your reviews of the city manager for five times. You gave him a contract in February. Honor his contract. He is the professional. Google his name. Look at his background. He's qualified. In fact, I had the opportunity of calling someone who knows him very well, someone who he considers his mentor, and she said, Jose is passionate about Livingston. And I'm passionate about Livingston, and that's why I came tonight. Thank you.
God, I can't read this thing. Good evening, council. My name is Dwight Larks. I am a former resident of the city of Livingston. I am here to express my personal concern. I'm here as an individual. I'm not here representing any government body or trying to intimidate you guys by, you know, saying anything about your police chief or anything like that. But I just want to say that I think if we're going to be a productive city, we need to do evaluations, and we need to do a lot of evaluations. There's nothing wrong with doing evaluations. In fact, at my business, I do plenty of evaluations all the time. I do them on my books, on my accounting, on my employees. I'm nonstop doing evaluations. So if there's people here asking you to not do an evaluation, whether it's weekly, monthly, I completely disagree with that, and I would have suspicion as to why they don't want an evaluation. There's nothing wrong with doing evaluations, as far as I'm concerned. My personal feelings about the city of Livingston and about the city manager is, we have a failing school system here. Over 75% of the students are failing proficiency exams. Who do I address, or who's supposed to keep decorum here? Can I get some of my time back, please? We have an obesity rate here in the city of Livingston of children that's over 50%. 50% of schoolchildren are obese in your town, in my town, and this little study shows that if you're obese at age 18, you'll be obese for the rest of your life. We have an incredible amount of intimidation here at this city. And people come in here and screaming and yelling like they just did. No respect for anyone who has a different opinion. And that's, in my opinion, a toxic environment. And we cannot afford to have a toxic environment. So who is responsible for the toxic environment? I think it's the city manager. I think the city manager is... I think the city manager is involved in quite a bit of the toxicity here. So I'm just one voice, but I'm voicing my opinion because I'm strong enough to voice my opinion here for myself. I'm not speaking for my office. I'm not speaking for my employees. I'm speaking here for myself. So I strongly encourage removing the city manager, if possible, adding a new city manager, getting some new breath, some new energy into our town, and moving forward, you know, moving forward in a positive way. The city manager is not Livingston. He is an employee of Livingston, and employees come and go. So if you're getting your feelings mixed up over one employee claiming that they are the city of Livingston, I think you need to reevaluate that. So my name is Dwight Larks, and that is my two cents.
Deo Castillo, we'd like to go on record in response to a petition that Dwight Larks is circulating to fire his city manager with incorrect and false information in which he has named me personally. It's in reference to a parcel we purchased last year to build workforce housing, two- and three-bedroom townhouse units. So I'm going to state the claim, and I'm going to state my response. So this is Dwight Lark's claim. Claims that city manager arranged a deal to sell city property with less than favorable terms and price than city could have received to a local realtor or political supporter, that being named me. This is my response to that. The sale was approved by the previous city council and not the city manager, and sold for above appraised value. If anyone wants to review the details of the council meeting where it was approved, it was September 15, 2020, at approximately 2:53. It was approved by a vote of 5-0 by the previous council, four of which are on the current council now. The second claim he makes is city manager was responsible and directly involved in at least one real estate sale where lucrative multifamily city of Livingston-owned real estate was sold to local realtor, city manager, rent supporter, realtor Deo Castillo in a highly unusual city finance transaction. Again, the sale was approved by the city council, the four of you, and the previous mayor, and not the city manager. The property was on the market, and advertised and listed for sale by a national real estate broker had been listed for sale six months prior to our offer being accepted, had fell out of escrow from previous buyer, the previous buyer council, due to improvements that would require, which are approximately 700 linear feet of sewer, water, utilities, curb, gutters, sidewalks, street lighting, road. In our opinion, it's three times the cost of land we paid. Again, we made the commitment to do these improvements, and we're going to provide this road for the city of Livingston. He made another comment that typically empty land requires 50% down, yet Mr. Castillo was able to purchase a property with less down payment. City of Livingston to act as a bank, the city of Livingston to take a credit application was this offering financed, offered to anyone else. The financing terms, in our experience, are not more favorable than we're used to getting. So he didn't do us... The city's not doing us a favor. Other item that he posted was, were these highly unusual and favorable terms noted for sale on the listing so that other normal citizens could have made an offer? Our offer was cash and not contingent on these terms. These terms were approved by the previous council because it was a way to generate more funds for a fire station. And then he asked one last point. Does the city manager work for Deo Castillo or the city manager? What is being questioned by Dwight Lark was approved by the previous council and the four currently... Four of which are currently on council. So the question I have in regard to the city manager evaluation, does the council work for the residents of Livingston, or is there another agenda the residents are not aware of? It's difficult to find great talent in the current environment, and for information provided to us at city council meetings, the city manager's doing a great job. Thank you.
I think the only reason we're here is because of Dwight Lark, and he's the only petitioner here that did not acquire his request. He's bashed the Livingston school system. He's bashed probably a quarter of the community. Mr. Ramirez has done everything, everything he has plenty done to keep us at its whole. I think Dwight Lark is the catalyst of all this, and if it's not, please tell me. This is the only petitioner in Livingston that has not gotten his request. That's all I have to say. He's the only one. But yet, we're here, and we get discriminated every time on Facebook. You guys do not support the community. You do not defend us. But the minute he speaks, oh, we're petty. You should be shameful.
My name is Mario Mendoza. I'm not really too concerned about you folks, but I am going to put a few words to Mr. Dwight Lark. I mean, first of all, you don't come into the city like other times, bashing Livingston, talking smack about us in Livingston. If you have something personal against anybody, please address it. And if it's against me because you think you're, you know, you're better than everybody else, let me know. We could talk it over outside, however you want.
Let's go. What's up? You want to talk outside? Let's go outside. Let's go. You brought it up. No, no. Not the criminal. Not the criminal.
And again, I support Mr. Ramirez all the way. You know, I guess Dwight has a lot of people behind him. It's just four council members that support him. But personally, I don't agree. I'm here all the time because the only times I come is because I'm passionate about the city. It's the only times I speak out. I did it in 2010 when we initiated the recall because of the other council members, and we accomplished it. I'm not afraid. Like I always say, I move forward. When I start something, we finish it. Thank you. But I'm going to stay here until my three minutes are up. But I'm going to stay here until my three minutes are up. Thank you.
My name is Flori Perez and I live here, um, Livingston. And I'm here, here today to support the manager, Jose Antonio Ramirez, because for me, what's matter is every time when I go like an event or meeting somewhere else here on Livingston, I see his face. I don't see like another face for the, some council members here. And also a couple meetings of, I was here and, and the council, I didn't see like some faces here. I don't want to mention the faces, but like, that's what only I can say. So also the rest of my time, I just, like everyone, waiting for one answer. So who put this in the agenda? And the person that he did it, I think, I don't know what, what it was his reason. Like I hear something in my back that, um, that they want to change, like they want like a manager super, someone else can be that easy they can, but no, doesn't, doesn't work like that. We can't change, um, put any person if we don't know what's the, um, how the person is going to work in the, in the city. And also like mostly other people like I saw on Facebook, they make a comment. I don't know who was the name right now. They, they ask like, what did they think about the, the city manager? He's doing a good job and what I see, it was like thirty-seven people. I mean, twenty-seven people that they said like, yeah, Mr. Ramirez is doing a good job. And I didn't see no one making a bad comment. Okay, that's it.
Can I go real fast? So that's because I, I was short on my three minutes. All right, all right.
Hi, my name is Laura Kudma, resident of Livingston. I just want to come up here and give you guys some true information about where you can find the facts about the schools and how well they doing it. I am an educator in Merced County. If you go to CaliforniaSchoolDashboard.org, that is where you will find the information about Livingston Union. You can look up each school individually. And in two thousand and twenty, there was no state test due to COVID, okay? Two thousand and nineteen is the, the latest results that they have and every school increased, or not every school, as a union, they increased points in English and math. So to say that seventy percent are failing, I don't know where the information is coming from. I actually asked for the website or the link to go see that information. I was not given that information. I was not given the information to go investigate it. I am, um, an educator. I have administrative degree, so I, this is something I had to study. I know that this is true and factual. So please don't listen to where other people are getting the information unless it is, um, provided to you by the state of California that all schools have to report to. Thank you.
It's cool. I'm, I'm vaccinated. Thank you. All right, so we are here again. I was a couple minutes late. So did somebody say where Raoul is? And, and Jose Morana, what happened to them? Where are they at?
Jose's on, Jose's on the phone and Raoul is running late. He'll be here later this evening.
Okay, so got some questions. Mr. Lawyer, who do you work for?
The citizens of Livingston through their elected city council.
Thank you. So of course it goes through the city council, but the, the, the council works or works for the, for the citizens, correct? So is it not public knowledge to know who put this in the agenda, Mr. Lawyer? I'm asking you.
No, it's, it's not. But I, I will point out that the city manager's contract calls for an annual evaluation in July. And I pointed that out, so.
Okay, so there are, I, I said this last time, I was here last time. So I'm going to repeat some of what I said last time. There's people here that, well, maybe not this time, but maybe some that we don't agree with each other all the time. You know, we, we don't agree with some of the things that have happened or have done, whatever. But we do agree, we're here for the same reason, even though we don't agree with each other, we're here to support the city manager. So you guys gotta, uh, keep that in mind. If people who don't, uh, may, maybe don't agree on everything can agree to have, to keep him, that's why we're here to support him. I said last, I'm not good with words, but I'm going to keep reading here, otherwise I'm not going to have time. So there are, uh, what is going on? I agree with, uh, with, um, the mayor, Grupal Samra. If Mr. Ramirez agrees, tell us what he's doing wrong. I know it's a personnel issue, but if he agrees to say it in public, tell us. There's got to be a reason for you, for people to evaluate, for you guys to evaluate him every, whatever. And, and, and I agree with, uh, the other gentleman too, yeah. We should have evaluations frequently, but for the right reasons. But we should also, but we'll also be evaluating the city council as well. As, as often as, uh, as, as we need to. I asked last time, and then this is going to my previous stuff because I asked this question, so please stop that time. I asked you guys last time and you say you were going to give me an answer, you didn't get it. How much is it going to cost if you guys end up letting him go? You guys told me you were going to give me an answer, I did not get it. I know it's six months, but you guys didn't tell me the money amount. I'm stopping there. Is that not public? I don't understand why you're not answering.
Well, you, you just divided his salary by two.
Okay, can you divide that for me?
I don't have the numbers. I, I, that's why I had to go to law school. I don't have the numbers.
Yeah, so. So, huh? I know time's up, but we had to stop because you guys were trying to figure out if you were going to tell me or not. Regarding the police chief, um, does somebody have the time they can give me? Anybody here? You can give me your time? Who, who said you can't do that? You can, you can do that.
No, that, no, because that could go on forever. That doesn't make sense.
Okay, all I'm going to tell you guys, Juan, I know you have a good heart. Do the right thing. I know deep down you have a good heart. Maria, please do the right thing, Maria. You guys know what's right. And, uh, you too, but I think that you and Raoul are the ones that are, um, together. So please do the right thing. If it's not you, do the right thing.
Hello, council. My name's Savannah Garcia. So my question is like many of the others is who added this evaluation to the agenda? And why precisely when Jose Moran is not in attendance? Why could this not wait until Mr. Moran returned? You all waited for Garcia to be in attendance when you selected the law firm. So why couldn't you all wait on this item as well? What is the urgency in this item? This is looking really bad on our city. It's embarrassing and it's looking like harassment. This looks like a good employee. My interaction has been nothing but good. He's been respectful, helpful. He's provided information. What is a problem? Can you guys be honest and tell us who put that on the agenda? And why at the last minute? Can you guys put this on hold until Jose Moran returns? Mr. Mayor? No, yeah, you did because he stated in a meeting about, I think the last time. Yeah, I know, but it's different when they're in person. That's it. I hope you guys do the right thing and you listen to the citizens that you serve.
Mayor, Council, Letty Sebasquez here. So I think you're all aware that people speak and information travels fast. And so I want to ask or present this information and hopefully, I know you won't answer, but hopefully other people could hear it. There's, um, talk that four employees were put on administrative leave last week, two weeks ago. I'm not sure the timeline. And these employees are either family or friends to council members. Is this a reason why we're doing another evaluation on the city manager? Also, Mayor, may I ask that when you speak, you turn your mic on because it's always off? Thank you.
Margarita Aguilar. Again, like everyone said, we're here for the, for asking questions. I know we could ask questions till we turn blue in the face and I know the majority will hide behind your mic. So we're here just to let you know that we are on to it. We know what's going on. We, we don't have all the concrete facts, but believe me, we're being, we're working on it. I'm going to focus on our city manager because that's more important than the, than the four employees that Letty was talking about. I want to thank Jose for your dedication to our community. I'd like to, uh, tell residents that he does have the open policy where residents could go in and talk to you and ask you questions and help you for some kind of guidance. And I know that council members, when they started, also asked for your guidance, okay? The sad part about it is like the dog who bites the one who feeds them. I know that our, our, um, city manager was let go a few years back and our mayor, along with our prior, um, mayor, um, Jim, I think it was Soria, looked for you. No, it wasn't Grupal, so I appreciate if you stop talking while I'm talking. Yeah, well, that's one of the individuals we'll talk about later. But anyways, as I was saying, so thank you for your time, Jose. Thank you for your professionalism, knowing that you've been attacked every which way by these council members and, and having all these evaluations. I know the attorney said that there's a, a, an evaluation once a year in, in July. If you heard the previous speakers, he's had six since August twenty. Six of them. The reason behind this, you ask, as many residents ask, and I'll let you know why we think and we've came up with, just like our resident, uh, Letty mentioned, there are four, we found out there are four employees that are, um, administrating leave and have the audacity to be here to show, uh, that they're standing up for themselves. That's wonderful. So are we. Two from Public Works. One is related to our mayor by being his first cousin. No, you know what? I said it was open. We have residents who have already spoken. Am I, am I, am I allowed to speak on that? I haven't said names. I haven't said names. I haven't said names.
City personnel cannot speak, city personnel cannot speak to them. Right.
So I'm okay.
Can I answer the question?
Yes, sir. Can you stop the time?
City personnel cannot discuss personnel matters, which is the reason the council can't respond to a lot of the questions. But public members can say things. Now, that can subject them to other potential liability, but that's on them.
Okay, well, as I was saying, so we, we went ahead and like I said, there's two from the police department, okay? And also one is related to one of the council members and you know who that is. I don't have to mention it. But regardless, that is what's, that's what's driving this. I don't, I don't know about any of you, but that, this is what's driving it because that happened sometime last week and on Friday they were hesitant. They, um, I believe attorney, you put it on request of the council, I believe. If I'm, if I'm wrong, please correct me and I will accept my error. But, um, like I said, we're here for all the wrong reasons, okay? It's self-interest for some of these council members. It's personal gain, family connections. It's either my way or the highway. You have the majority and you'll do, make or break the city. But guess what? The people have spoken and there is a recall on the roll and it's going to happen. And Jose, again, stand tall. Don't let, don't be intimidated because we hate bullies and that's what we have here, bullies.
Good evening, Council. Hilda Lopez. Obviously I'm here to support Mr. Ramirez as well, but I'd like to address one of the greater issues that has come to light this evening. I mean, it's, it's always been an issue, but it's really noticeable tonight is that the lack of transparency. So many of our council members sit there and tout about transparency, this and transparency, that. But everybody here tonight has asked for answers, asked for clarification and none has been provided except for the very little information that our city attorney has offered, that this was already built into the city manager's contract of this particular evaluation. Whether that is the case of why we're seeing it tonight or not, who knows? But either way, all people are asking for is information. There are so many misconceptions going around. People are letting rumors fly, talking about, you know, information that who even, how do you even get this information? No offense to anybody, but I follow things pretty closely and yet I'm learning so much tonight. And I feel that we need more information from our city council. It's not okay to sit there and not answer questions, not even acknowledge people when they're commenting. You know, you guys want a citizen involvement in these types of meetings, but yet you won't even give us the courtesy to acknowledge us half the time, let alone answer the valid concerns that we have. It's absolutely ridiculous. If you guys would just speak up, clarify, provide the information that the citizens are asking and are entitled to, these meetings wouldn't be dragged out like this. We would have the answers that we need before we get here. You know, just because some of you guys don't do your homework doesn't mean that we don't want to. So that's all we're asking for. Clarity, real transparency, actual transparency. It's not okay just to speak about it. You need to be about it, as cliche as that sounds. Thank you.
At this time, I don't see any other public comment. Anybody on the phone? Okay, we're going to go ahead and move on.
Juan, I have the emails.
Yes.
Go ahead, on the phone.
Jason Robb. Yes.
Go ahead, on the phone.
Good evening, Council. Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to say a few things. Removing Jose is a big mistake. From what it's doing to stop an economic growth for the city, which is very important for the city. There are also the, the facts that matter to the other people. Good working people that are going to be out of jobs. I'm all for Jose Ramirez. Think he's doing a great job. Uh, this community, it needs, we need him. I think he's doing awesome. As for the chief, Anthony, and the other, and the other gal, you guys, you got to think about it. Just because you can remove somebody, doesn't mean you should. Treat him transparently, guys. That's what needs to be told. Thank you.
Anybody else on the phone?
Yes, um, hello. Good evening, uh, city council and Mr. Mayor. I do refuse to give my name due to the fact that there are individuals there right now currently who have threatened bodily harm. currently, who have threatened bodily harm for just speaking the truth. First and foremost, I am very upset, honestly. I'm extremely scared for the well-being of our own town, Livingston. I mean, we have individuals here tonight who honestly are only here for their own political gain. If I'm not mistaken, we have a few of our old mayors and an old city council member. Let me also remind you one thing about these individuals. These were the same individuals that had terminated the same city manager and another city manager, if I'm not mistaken. They did not hold a public meeting to, which they're advising that maybe you should do tonight. I mean, why didn't they do that then? That's my number one thing, why didn't they do that then? And I also like to shed a more light. There's a few of your own, like your treasurer, for example, right now, goes on to these logs and sheds so much drama. I mean, she's just doing all this, like, I can tell you right now, she's clearly breaking the code of conduct and talking ill about all the council members besides Ramirez. Luckily for us, tonight, Ramirez isn't here, right? Because, I mean, obviously, I mean, he is, he's easily manipulative, you know? I mean, these members that came, they easily manipulate him. And I can tell that Mr. Ramirez is probably doing this for his own political gain. I mean, I didn't elect an official just because, you know what, he's gonna listen to me. No, we're gonna have disagreement. But clearly, it shows that this guy faults everything. He also, I also want to point out one thing. These old city managers, Mr. Mayor, I don't think you should be scared of them. They're old mayors, they hold no power. It just seems like now, finally, the candy is getting snatched out of their hand, and they're starting to cry. That's all I wanted to share. I mean, this is the same city manager that let go of some very, very, very good cop. And he didn't think twice about doing that. But I just want, that was my little spiel right there. Thank you for your time. Have a wonderful night.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Anna Alberto. First of all, I want to say, Jose, I support you. I have some questions for Councilmember Garcia and King. Do you recall in 2018 that you approached to me wanting my support? Yes, no? No, obviously. Okay. I recall I was at Sweet Potato Festival in 2018 when Mr. King Garcia approached to me to support him as council members. In that conversation, there were more people, which I'm not gonna say names, but King specifically said that he had my support for sports and bring more soccer fields, et cetera. You guys all know the political promises.
Excuse me. Is there anything in here about the closed session items?
I'm gonna go there. That's my, my time's running. Yeah, that's where I'm going, for the closed session. So, where I'm getting is, Mr. King promised me all these, you know, for our organization. In one of those conversations, I met on 10/31/2018, you were passing out candies with your brother.
Excuse me, Mayor and Council. This doesn't seem appropriate for the agenda. This is about city, the city council meetings are for city business, not personal business?
Well, can I?
Well, no, it has to be about city business, not personal business. No, you have to get there now.
Well, my time's running. You guys been stopping my time.
It doesn't matter. You haven't talked about any city business yet.
You keep on interrupting me. Where I'm getting is very simple. You promised to give donation and support to our organization. Your brother did, and it never happened. I reached out to you, and you never reached back to me. I remember calling you, you never reached back to me. So, what I'm trying to say, because I've been interrupted and I lost my thing, is neither of you guys answer me on supporting our organization. But once you guys were elected, then, once you guys were elected, stopped reaching out to me and supported me. My question is this, one, it's very unclear. You run for city council and promise false information. You have a sergeant of our city of Livingston, who has family members, supports false information. Your promise is to help us in our event and giving us donation never happened. You never answer phone calls and email. But you reevaluate a city manager who answers phone calls, supports citizens in the Livingston, has never given false information, or tried to give a vote to be a council member or supporter anyhow. Does that make sense to you? It doesn't make sense to me. Maybe you could explain. So, why can't you change your rules and make it the other way around? Can we reevaluate you right now? And we could, can we do it right now? Can you guys vote on it? Is there such thing like that? Would you like your leaders, those who represent the city, to lie to you in a position like that? Mr. Mayor, I wanted to ask you, can you remove this item from the agenda right now? And also, on 8/18, councilmember came, my time was, councilmember came, decided to, there was a meeting saying that he wanted to leave per the attorney because it involved a situation going with his brother. Can you opt out of this voting too? If that's the case, if they don't want to remove the item from the agenda? Can you opt yourself out of the voting too, like you did last time? Well, I mean, they interrupted me half of the conversation, so that's what I'm trying to ask. So, Mr. Mayor, my question is to you, can you remove this item out of the agenda right now? You cannot?
You don't have to.
No, we're not going to remove it.
Oh, you don't want to? Okay.
Well, it requires a vote and a motion and all of that stuff. We're taking.
Right, you could, you could, I'm sorry?
Your time's up. Thank you.
Alberrius, longtime resident of Livingston. Basically, this question is for the lawyer. If they were to hypothetically go back to the closed session and terminate Mr. Ramirez based on what happened to the four gentlemen that got suspended, or whatever it was, would Juan Aguilar, being related to one of them, would he be able to vote on his termination? Or would councilmember King?
I can't comment on a hypothetical question involving city employees.
Hypothetically, you guys might do it or you might not, but. So, no answer. That's the conflict, yeah. I didn't know the word, but conflict.
No, it's not. Theoretically, it wouldn't be a conflict of interest, no.
No.
No, not under the Fair Political Practices Commission, it would not be a conflict of interest if that was the case.
How? Explain it to me.
It's not, it's not, I can give you the conclusion. I'm not gonna, I can't. The regular council meeting starts in four minutes. The answer is, it's not a conflict. If you want to double-check me, contact the Fair Political Practices Commission and ask them.
We'll make sure we do, but, so, no, no conflict there. No, no, no answer then. So, if he happens to be terminated tonight, and they're able to vote?
I'm done with these kind of questions. It's ridiculous.
Okay. All right, that's all we need.
No, I work, I work for the citizens of Livingston through their elected city council, not a few people angry at a council meeting.
Any further public comment at this time? I don't see any. So, we're gonna go ahead and.
One, I have the emails.
Sorry, go ahead. Go ahead, sorry, Monica forgot.
No problem. Okay, this email was from Gabriel Salazar. And he states, "I'm surprised that this item is yet again on the city council agenda for closed session. A couple months back, we just had a council meeting concerning the city manager's performance evaluation, and the town was upset and advocating for his continuation. I just want to express that I strongly support of Jose Ramirez and his continuation as city manager. We should not change city managers or let them go where it costs more money. And to me, as a resident, he is doing a great job. I have been disappointed with the city council, not all members, but some, and these type of discussions to me are again a waste of time. This is the third performance evaluation in five months. As a resident, it is evident some council members do not care about this community and have their own agendas and self-interest as their number one priority. I hope you all make the best decision for Livingston residents and businesses and continue Jose Ramirez as city manager." We got another one from Babs. "My concern again is why are you for trying to fire the city manager? He has been an excellent manager. I find no fault with his manager, management. You four have put the city of Livingston in an embarrassing situation. I hear things that have been said about marijuana on Main Street, and to please leave the police department alone." They have been with the city, so this started in 1922. "We, as the city, have done it very well, well until you four have taken office. I hope these comments are taken seriously. As you see, we have people retiring, and I hope it is not a fault of things that have happened. We have excellent people working for the city, and you should be well aware of the fact. They need to be thanked, not punished, in my opinion. Keep the city manager for all sakes." Teresa Lan. "Mr. Ramirez has done awesome job as our city manager for many years now, both current and in recent past. I personally had the privilege to work with Mr. Ramirez and have no doubt that he has and has always had the city's best interests in mind. It is not easy task overseeing the day-to-day operations of the management of the city, especially with new council members every couple of years. However, Mr. Ramirez looks for opportunities to improve Livingston's infrastructure while networking to bring potential businesses that would benefit and enhance the city. He has been a tremendous asset to our community, and we want him to continue to advocate for our city. Mr. Ramirez is a man of honor, respect, dignity, and integrity, and I ask that you keep these qualities in mind when evaluating his performance today." We got another email. It doesn't state who it is, it's just this residence. "Good afternoon, everyone. We want to give our humble opinion regarding Mr. Ramirez. We have noticed that all those who come to his defense are business people, downtown property owners, and former members of the council. Could it be because everyone got some benefit from him? There are many who are not like these people, and it does not mean that we do not have a voice. Our voice was heard in November when many of us were finally able to vote. So, the couple that always presents themselves saying that they respect, represent people who do not have a voice are definitely not representing us because we do not share their opinion. We would like to know who they refer to. And if we didn't show up at the meeting before, maybe out of shyness, neither will we now, after hearing the vocabulary and threats of that woman and her significant other. Perhaps some of us are not so familiar with all the politics of this city, but one thing we do know, we want equality and equity for all, and that our vote be enforced." We got another one for Mila Hernandez. "Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I strongly support our current city manager Ramirez. He has gone beyond of his expectations, not only to the council, but its citizens. We see so much growth in this city, especially in the last six months. Hope if, for any reason, you dismiss Mr. Ramirez, you will give the citizens of Livingston an adequate reason." And then, we got an email from Dwight Larks regarding his, the petition to remove city manager. There was 46 sign. Okay. Huh? Which one? Okay, then we got another one from Dawn Lukemback. "Members of the city council, I consider it an honor to speak about the city manager of Livingston, Jose Ramirez. If I did not have a conflicting appointment, I would have been there in person. As the chief operating officer for Emerald Textile Services, it was my, it was my responsibility to find a location that would benefit our company and allow us to build a state-of-the-art commercial laundry service hospitals in the North Cal Market. I called Mr. Ramirez and set an appointment to come meet with him to describe our project and see if the city of Livingston would meet our needs. When I showed up to the appointment, he was there along with his key staff members of the city so they could all hear our plans. I was able to check all the boxes and left feeling we have the right partners for our project. We found an 85,000-square-feet building. As soon as we were on our way to the building, a $20 million state-of-the-art commercial laundry build out like these will inevitably have challenges, and this is what separates real partners or not. I received so many calls from Jose during the 18 months, 18 months of construction wanting to know if he or his team could help us in any way. He was just as excited about the project as we were and wanted to see the plant open up. I called on him a few times to share with him issues and challenges causing delays we were having with contractors, and he would let me know not to worry, and he and his team are there to work with us. When the plant was nearing and operating, opening, and it was time to begin hiring, Jose offered the services of the city, of the city hall to us. When the plant, where, sorry, I lost my, okay, where potential employees could pick up an application for Emerald and also offered to house a job fair with us. On the day we were to have the job fair, it was to start at 10:00 a.m. My team showed up at 9:30, and the lines was down to the street with applicants. Needless to say, it was a complete success. I would share the attitude and commitment to our project from Jose and his entire staff with the board of members, and they were very pleased and knew we picked the right city to build our plant. We opened October 1st, 2019, and now employ over 200 local residents. We have just completed another, another large acquisition where we will be adding another 35 million pounds of linen annually, and we'll hire another 150 to 175 employees. There is no way we could have completed this project without Jose's personal involvement. I consider Jose a true professional who represents his city with extreme pride. He is one of the hardest-working individuals I've met with the utmost integrity. I feel I have gained a friend in Jose, and I hope the feeling is mutual. If you would like to know anything else, I am available anytime."
Thank you, Monica. So, at this time, obviously, it's time for the start of a regular session.
One more public comment?
Go ahead, last one.
Thank you. Just want to know why, just so, why the mayor pro tem always visits meetings, never shows up on time, and what the city council, and what is the appropriate act, other than maybe the recall, although 100%, don't have to worry about him never being there, council again. Thank you.
We're gonna go ahead and move on to our regular meeting. So, we're gonna call the meeting to order at 7:00 or 8:00 p.m.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, my apologies for the attorney. I would like to waive my right for a closed session evaluation behind closed doors and leave it up to the council to move forward or not.
Jose, the city manager, I'm confused as to the impact. Do you believe that?
Mr. Tom. As it relates to, as an employee, I have a right to, of course, always behind closed session, you know, because it's a personnel matter. But I would waive that right. So, if council can have the evaluation of my person in front of the public, I have nothing to hide. Thank you.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Mayor, can you hear me? This is councilmember Moran.
Go ahead.
At this time, I would like to ask the council and to consider moving item number four to an open session meeting, as Mr. Ramirez has waived his right to have this in closed session.
Mayor and council, I would have to strongly advise you against that in light of all of the allegations regarding city personnel. I believe that would be a tremendously bad idea and expose the council and the city to tremendous litigation exposure.
There's a motion on the floor?
It's a motion by councilmember Jose Moran. Any second? There's no second, the motion dies. Okay, now, we're gonna go ahead and move on to our regular meeting, calling to order at 7:10 p.m. Because everybody. Because everybody please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Is someone on hold for public comment?
All right, go ahead.
Yeah, my name is Patricia Ramus Anderson, vice president of the Black D.C. United Veterans Citizens. And as an experienced person working in the city manager's office as well as representing the community, is that this issue was discussed at last on meeting and the community is also asking is transparency and that the organization is managed by the city manager and it was discussed of his values and experience in the city and experience during the difficult times of these budget, income coming into the local city. But more importantly, it's also within the elected officials, they also have a responsibility of also respecting, they were elected to represent the residents and the citizens of the township of the city, but that they have to also be transparent and they're not there for their own self-interest or politics. This is about public service as an elected official. And also as a city manager is the administrator of operating or running the city to benefit the community and the public project services that can come into your city that benefits everyone as a whole. And all we're asking, all the community is asking is that, is that we need to keep in mind that when you're doing a good job, you need to have experienced people be in those positions to get you through these times that are gonna be difficult for budgetary reasons. And also for the experience that they bring to the table and what they've been able to do in these hardship times. But as elected officials, we cannot say politics, games behind the doors. We are there to represent the community as a whole and also the community also has their own options of if they don't like what they see happening in their city by their elected officials, they have other options and avenues to address those issues. And let's not forget that, you are an elected official to represent them as a whole and not individual interests or if there's conflict of interest, they need to be addressed accordingly. And Jose Ramirez as city manager has been very effective in his position, doing the policies for personnel and decisions of a city and also to give direction and also the other staff and give direction to the city on how to operate. And as elected officials, follow the protocols that are needed and to be transparent. And that's all the community asks for is there needs to be transparency and none of these politics or games being played behind the scenes and that we stay focused on what's best interest of the community and the city in managing it, running it, and getting our projects funded with grants by an experienced city manager. That's the bottom line. Thanks for your time, but again, the residents will ultimately make decisions and hold individuals accountable for their actions and inaction of not supporting the best interest of the taxpayers, the residents, and the city. Thank you.
Okay, now we're gonna go move on to our regular meeting at seven-fourteen PM. So stand for pledge of allegiance, please. Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, I would like to speak in support of Jose Ramirez.
Silence for our correspondents and military members.
Monica, could we get roll call? You can speak during citizen comments, you can speak there.
Roll call, council member Soto. President, council member Moran.
President.
Council member King.
Present.
Mayor Protem Garcia. Mayor Aguilar.
Present.
For the record, Mayor Protem Garcia is not in attendance, but his absence is excused.
In regards to closed session announcing, we're gonna continue the closed session till after a regular scheduled meeting. Council, any changes to the agenda? Okay, we're gonna go move on to our citizen comments. This section of the agenda allows members of the public to address city council on any items not otherwise on the agenda. Members of the public when recognized by me should come forward, identify themselves. Comments are normally limited to three minutes and according to the state opening meeting laws, no action will be taken by the city council this evening. For items which are on the agenda this evening, members of the public will be provided an opportunity to address the city council as each item is brought up for discussion. Citizen comments.
Good evening, council, mayor. I was gonna speak on the closed session item. You said I could speak right now. I'm here in support of Jose Ramirez. I don't, you know, I would say that the council should think about the evaluation. It's just mind-boggling why the council keeps bringing it up again. It just seems that it's retaliation of what, on the circumstances that is happening because of actions by, by some council members, they're retaliating against the city manager. So I would advise the council, you know, not to go ahead and fire the city manager. I think it's leading to, to illegalities in regards to, and I, and I think that, you know, as a result, some council members, if, if it's because of that, they should be abstained from voting on the evaluation regarding the circumstances that's happening and placing the city manager on, on the evaluation. So I know that, that the council might not care about the expenses that the city is incurring due to the fact that, that recall is going on, but you know, this community is upset. This community is upset that, you know, this is happening in regards to firing the city manager, the conflicts of interest, and you know, on and I can go on and on and on. And I think that, as you see, it's not gonna stop and if, for some reason, the city manager would, would, if the city, you know, the council would want to release the city manager and after the recall and new council members take these seats, I think they, they would have an option to bring back the city manager. You know, if you guys don't care about the expenses, it's gonna cost hundreds of thousands of dollars to pay out the city manager in case he gets, he gets released because if he has a five or six month service package, you're talking about a hundred thousand dollars plus, you know, all the, the time and hours that he has incurred, you know, and has to be paid back. So, you know, that's not a time change. You know, we're already in, you know, a profit of two thousand dollars in, in the budget. So those, those numbers are not there. So I would advise against, against that. And if the council thinks about firing the just hired chief of police to place somebody that you guys want on there, that's, that's not proper. You guys have to be transparent and I would advise not, not to, to follow through on that. So, council, do the right thing. Thank you.
Any other citizen comments? Any items on the agenda?
So I did not know when I came that there was staff that was on administrative leave, but now that I know that, it should be a conflict of interest, Mr. Lawyer, for a family member that's on the council to vote on removing a city manager who is directly involved with that. It should be a conflict of interest that any family member vote on this if it comes. Is that right or wrong, Mr. Lawyer?
I shouldn't have answered the question during the public comment on the closed session, but I wanted to give you some idea that these questions, these things that seem like common sense conflicts are usually not legal conflicts. So I'm not gonna discuss any specific details about any other conflict, but just to say that.
Well, I just wanted to, to make sure that that was made public and, and kept in the minutes. Juan, you can still remove this if you want to. You can put it up to ask that it be removed. I know you can. Like I said, I know you, you're a good person, but I don't know why you're going along with this, with these other people. Rodrigo was saying the cost. I, when I asked earlier about the cost, I know what it is, but I want the public to hear the ones that don't know. I know what it's gonna cost us and it's not just the ninety-six thousand dollars, it's gonna be more because I get, well, I mean, it's gonna cost more to, to get another city manager and if what I'm hearing that you're also planning to let go of the police, the brand-new police chief, that's gonna cost money to get someone else and so on and so on. So I wanted to ask again, who and why is this on the agenda again?
Mayor and council, this item is not on the regular agenda, which is what we're discussing now. This is not a time to rehash the, the same issue from the closed session, so.
See, I'm gonna read this to you, Mr. Lawyer.
There was an item already on, that's what we just talked about for an hour and fifteen
You've interrupted the other comments as well, but do you want me to read you what it says about the public comment or do you know?
I know it very well. This, we just talked, we started this meeting at six o'clock, a closed session to discuss item number four. Item number four is not on the regular agenda, so you, so we don't talk about it again. This should be for things other like, like a code enforcement question somebody has and things like that.
The section of this agenda allows members of the public to address the city council on any item not otherwise on the agenda. I know that that's what you're going to. Members of the public when recognized by the mayor should come forward to lantern and identify themselves. Comments are normally limited, blah, blah, blah. So I know what it is.
Counsel, I'm here again. Legal, I respectfully disagree. You were, oh, 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 hold on, I'm on. It's a citizen comment. I have the right to say without interruption from anybody, it doesn't matter what the comment is. It says otherwise not on the agenda. It was on the agenda or not. This is a regular session, that was a closed session. This is entirely different session. Citizen's comment still takes precedence here, sir. I know the rule. You have to let us speak uninterrupted.
Mayor, my friend, we, this meeting started with a closed session and that item, it's the same meeting.
Okay, are you trying to tell me that, that citizens cannot comment on citizen's comment?
They already had an hour and fifteen minutes to talk about that.
It doesn't say if you already commented before.
Right, but on, it has to be on a different item, Mayor.
No, no, it doesn't. Okay, look.
Who's the lawyer?
I am speaking, sir. Mr. Mayor, would you please control the audience on this one?
Everybody, please. Everybody, please calm down. Go ahead and finish your comment. Go ahead, finish your comment.
I want my clock reset. I was really interrupted by attorney when I'm making a citizen's comment.
You had asked the question.
I don't see where it says if this item is on the previous agenda, item, you cannot speak on it. It says citizen's comment. So please reset the clock, Mr. Mayor. Reset the clock.
I'll give you additional time, that's it.
Okay, reset the clock, ma'am. How much time are you gonna, how much are you gonna give me back for?
I'll give you thirty seconds.
Okay, fine. Please tell us again, where does it say that you cannot disclose who put the item on the agenda? Please tell us that. Can somebody quote me? A government code says you cannot say who put the item on the agenda. Not the, not the content, but you have to disclose because I believe at the last council meeting, when you guys tried to do this, this thing before, the previous attorney says you have to disclose and you guys disclosed it. Is that true? You guys disclosed it. So you disclosed it again. Who put this item on the agenda? So why not? Why didn't you do it before and not this time? Is it because perhaps you got your mind made up already? Is that what it is? So you're just waiting for everybody to go home and then tomorrow morning we'll have Toby Wells or somebody in here? Is that what it is? Okay, fine. Thank you very much.
My name is Colette Alvernas, P.O. Box two-five-five, Livingston, California. Thank you for this opportunity to come before you. Regarding citizen comments, the idea of public comment is to discuss things when they're brought up on the agenda. By the nature of a closed comment, we can't come and speak on closed, the, the council isn't speaking to us on closed items because they're closed. And so if we want to make a comment, then the citizen comments is where we can make it and by the nature of a closed item, the council's limited on what they can say or do. And that's my understanding of it. I've come before the council many times in the last fourteen years and that, and tonight we have contention. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you and we thank you for every life that's in this room. We ask that your divine peace comes and dwells with us. Heavenly Father, we need your wisdom on guiding Livingston. What is the best path? Who are our best leaders? Do you have someone else in mind for us? Guide and direct our mayor and our city council members to make the right decision for us. Holy Spirit, I ask that you would open up every heart and mind and soul and that we would love one another and be a community. Help us to remember that we are neighbors and life has value and we can learn from opposing sides. Metal sharpens metal and we just really need to come together and find the best for the city of Livingston. I ask that you would be with all of their decisions and paths they go tonight. I ask that you would give us safety in our families and on the roads. I ask that mothers and fathers would love their children and husbands and wives would love and honor and cherish each other. I ask for a community of peace where our law enforcement individuals are protected and our firefighters are protected. I ask health for the individuals. I ask a community where our children can play and be safe and we don't have to worry about those terrible awful things we hear on the news. I ask that we would be a light for the state of California and for our nation and I praise you, God, for the freedoms we have in our nation. I praise you that I have the freedom to come to this podium and pray and express my thoughts and views. And I ask that you continue to bless and guide us and give us your wisdom and perfect peace. In the name of Jesus, we pray.
Any other public comments? Anybody on the phone?
Yes, I'm actually on the phone. Sorry, this is Michaela Garcia, may I speak?
Yeah, go ahead.
Hi, I'm a citizen of the community, just like the rest of the public and just watching tonight's meeting. It's such a disappointment to see how the citizens are behaving and the behavior even someone such as a past mayor, to get up and speak and loudly and just so much passive-aggressiveness. It's just very disgusting to be able to even see that. You know, just everyone's entitled to their own opinions, just as I am. Everyone is in it for themselves. It's disrespectful too and unprofessional to disclose who's on administrative leave, talking down upon any city council member, any elected official. Citizens should also be held accountable of their behavior. You're also representing, you're also representing the community just like anyone else did. So do the right thing and do not dissuade the actor. That is my, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you for your time.
Anybody else?
Mayor, council members, members of the community. I wanted to share some information or situation that happened about two weeks ago regarding Councilwoman Soto. As you all know, there's a recall going on and when the people who are getting recalled were served, you received a list of people that signed that form. I was one of them. Councilmember Soto used her Facebook page. Councilmember Soto used her Facebook page to share not only our names, but our addresses.
Excuse me, mayor and counsel, again, this is a, this is a personal political business. It's not city business.
I have the right to say whatever I want.
You don't have the right to say whatever you want.
Yes, I do.
That's not how it works.
My concern here is whether it's against the law or not, displaying private citizens' addresses on social media and requesting we get questioned is unethical and immoral. You are not, can you look at me, Councilwoman Soto? You are not only exposing me, and I'm pregnant, but you're exposing my toddler. You sit there and you speak about women, that you're here to support women, you're here to support children, but yet you ask for your supporters to come after a woman who's pregnant and her children. Where are your morals? And I'm going to take my whole time since our city attorney felt that he needed to cut me off when this is not your time, this is my time.
It's what the law and the rules say.
I'm not asking you. I'm not asking you.
Well, I know, you're just doing what you want.
Exactly. Because that's my right. In three minutes, I can say whatever I want. This is the lawyer that we chose for our city. Very ethical, very professional. Good job, council members. We're watching you.
Any other citizen comments? I don't see any.
Juan, I have an email.
Go ahead. Sorry.
Okay. This email doesn't state who it's from. So it says, "To the mayor and councils, why is it that Ms. Soto can do anything she wants in this town and there are no consequences placed upon her? That campaign propaganda she called morals should have been removed within 30 days after the election was over. It's not even immoral. She did not follow any of the rules that the city created for morals. Let's call it what it is, graffiti vandalism. She has her name on it. She vandalized property with graffiti. Can she be punished by enforcing that application laws? Didn't she make an agreement with the arts committee to remove it or submit the correct paperwork application by a certain date months ago and never did anything about it ever? That is so disrespectful to the arts committee, the community, other elected officials and herself. She should be embarrassed that a city, that a city council member, she violated her own city's rules. Nobody is holding her accountable, so now I am. Her punishment should be to paint over it all by herself on a weekend for everyone to see. Public humiliation is how this town rolls. Take down that graffiti, Ms. Soto, and stop vandalizing our main streets."
Okay, we're going to go ahead and move on to announcements and reports. Supervisor Rodrigo Espinoza.
Due to the circumstances, I don't have anything tonight unless you, council or the public have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer.
Any questions for the supervisor?
Mr. Keoga.
Yes, sir.
The Bird Street, is that something the county can help with or not the city?
The Bird Street, you mean the road to be paved, correct?
The Birds.
Oh, Birds, okay, I'm sorry. I'm thinking the Bird Street over here. I get a lot of calls regarding the road that, you know, a lot of potholes.
Since they tore down the theater, then pigeons look for other places. I know this came up a long time ago and.
I don't know if you, you want to come over here so that way the public can hear?
That's what I was saying.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Speak on the phone, speak.
Speak on the, they're just asking questions regarding the bird issue around the city. Well, I guess it's just, you know, it's environmentally, I guess we got to follow the laws in regards to trapping and, you know, there's something that, you know, it has to be followed with animal control. And, you know, I don't think you can shoot them because, you know, people will get in trouble. So I guess they have to be trapped.
Who can do something about it, the city or the county?
Well, if they're in the city, that's up to the city, depending on the area they're at, so.
Let me go ahead and address that if I came there. So as it relates to pigeons, you, we, you might recall when we had the court theater here and we had a tremendous amount of pigeons. So the city basically did a number of things. We contracted with a professional that had Ospreys, Hawks that came in and they released them and a lot of those pigeons left because they were scared. Several others were actually captured and we worked with a lot of the property owners here to trap them in cages, okay? So if there, it sounds like there is some more issue in certain parts of town, we're more than happy to make contact with you and look for solutions to the problem. So it is a city issue.
Yeah, I know at some point they had different kind of birds, like around the summer heron and we had big trees and I can't remember, there were cranes, white cranes that were gathering in the evenings and, you know, they put all over the parking lot and everything. So it just depends on the location of, so in this situation, it's the city. So I know it's an expense for the city council also to implement on whatever treatment they decide, so. Any other questions? Thank you very much. Thank you.
City staff announcements and reports. Does that have anybody, any staff members?
Yes, Chief.
Just a couple of new things, Mr. Mayor, council, community. This past week, we met with the citizens' traffic committee, which there's been a city one and a community one. We met with them and I'm happy to report that we're going to come back as one traffic committee and work together to resolve things instead of everybody going here, there, everywhere, so it all be in one spot so we can address traffic issues. Our next meeting will be September 21st together. Glad to report on the spade neuter program, that we got a vet who's interested in helping us in the program. He's out of Hillmar, so we'll be working the details out with him in the next few months to start the spade neuter program. And my last item is we'll be sponsoring National Night Out on August 3rd in front of the police department. So I have flyers for anybody that wants it. We'll be out there with hopefully the fire department and some other agencies. We'll be barbecuing hot dogs and Starbucks has also agreed to be a partner with it and be out there with us as well. And that's all I have tonight.
Thanks, Chief.
Sorry, Chief.
Sorry. Yes.
Can you give us an update in regards to what you had a conversation with Libby Matlock in regards to a PAL program?
I'm still waiting for her to produce the items that I asked for, which was their bylaws, their 501K and how they're operating their program. And those haven't been produced to me yet.
What is your overall feel for the program?
I want to read all that before I make a decision because most of it's operated out of the city of Atwater. And I want to make sure before I assign my name to it that it's going to be operated out of the city of Livingston.
Oh, I thought you had made your decision in the room, but thank you.
Tony Marquez, recreation specialist. Good news, Jackie will be back August 2nd. So thank you for all your prayers and concerns for Jackie. We are super excited to have her back. I'm almost ready to do cartwheels. It's a, but we've been up and running for recreation. Soccer is off to a great start. We have 350 kids signed up. It's only about 50 shy of what we are normally at before the pandemic. So thank you all, Livingston and the youth, for coming out. We still do need coaches though, in all the boys divisions, and I need three in the U6, which are five and six. We actually have all the girls' coaches for our U9 and upper girls' coach. So thank you, everybody, for volunteering and stepping forward. If you'd like to coach, you can give me a call at the rec office at 394-8830 or on our Facebook page. Really appreciate it and the kids would too. It gives a lot back. I am personally taking two teams myself, so I really appreciate anybody else who would like to coach soccer. And then we did the skills assessment on Saturday. It went really well. Our rec commission was out. They also did a fundraiser and thank everybody who was even not involved in the skills assessment. They came out. Rolo came out, the mayor came out. Really appreciate seeing you guys, haven't seen you in a while. And all the parents who brought their kids out and it went really well. And I really like to thank our rec commission chair, Julio Mion, helped spearhead that and make it more efficient. In the next coming week, I will be posting for referees. It's usually the youth of Livingston. I usually hire out of the high school. It's their first job, but if you'd like the job, you can come see me. It does pay minimum wage. And classes will resume in August. We're doing signups now for ballet, karate and bengra. And they are filling up, so if you'd like to sign your child up, all the information is on our rec page on Facebook or you can give us a call. It's also posted at City Hall. And looking forward to the National Night Out, Chief. It has always been a lot of fun and so I'll be posting that on our social media as well. And I just want to thank you guys all and I hope and pray that you all make the right decisions for not only the citizens, but for the staff of Livingston as well. Appreciate you.
No other staff reports? No? Okay. We're going to go move on to city management announcements and reports.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and council and public. I have a few items that I'd like to report on. One, we have, we have a number of different issues before us that we have to address and our council is fully aware of these items. One is the tax sharing agreement that we haven't had since 2010. So that's of higher priority and we need to address that. And our council addressed it from, as part of our budget process and looking at enter into some type of mediation with the county regarding that item. Number two, as you all know, our general plan update is in full gear. We expect by this time next year for the general plan to be updated. And so citizen participation is very valuable and wanted. If you want to be put on one of the newsletters, you can. Again, it's an ongoing living document, so please participate. And then lastly, I also want to share that, you know, the city of Livingston has been a leader in terms of, in many areas, but one in particular has been broadband and trying to make sure that broadband, that there's broadband for everyone. And so I've been a participant with the California Emergent Technology Fund for a while, for years now. So I'm happy to report that I got an invitation from our governor's office and was, and participated in the legislation earlier today with him and other legislators that signed into law $6 billion that are going to be available for rural and urban cities for the last mile and the middle mile. So that means that the county of Merced can really be positioned as well as the city of Livingston because we have to make sure that connectivity is not only have the capacity but has the speed so that all the kids that, that we, and the problems we experienced during the pandemic of not being able to, you know, virtually participate and partake in their schooling will have not, will not have that problem in the future. So one of the things that we've been doing, working with the school districts, is coming up with a map that shows where that connectivity is and where it lacks. And so again, we're working really closely with the California Emergent Technology Fund, the San Joaquin Valley Broadband Consortium and others. And it was, it was an honor to participate again in the signing with the governor today representing the city of Livingston and in the school districts. So thank you very much. That's all I have, Mayor, unless you have any questions for me or the council.
Counsel, any questions for the city manager? Nope? Okay, we're going to go ahead and move on to city council members announcements and reports. Councilmember King?
Yeah, on July 9th, I went and attended the UFW Foundation. They were out there on Memorial Park giving out free food boxes and first 100 people got free gift cards. And then today I attended the mosquito baby meeting. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Jose Moran on the phone?
Yes, thank you for that. I have a few items to report on. July 8th, I participated via a Zoom meeting with the League of California Cities, specifically with the California Valley District Executive from E. And one of the items that, on the agenda to discuss was how to increase participation by committee members. This meaning, how to increase participation by city representatives. In this particular committee, I am the alternate. And also there was, part of the conversation was how disappointing the director of the committee was by the lack of attendance by appointed or alternates. The only members present at this meeting were representatives of Trolock, Southchilla, Modesto, Riverbank, myself from Livingston and I am, I am the alternate, Latrop and Frank Quintero, representing Merced, Director of Economic Development. On July 9th, I was able to, I was invited and I was able to participate in the United Farm Workers, with the United Farm Workers Foundation. And I was reached out to try and recruit volunteers from within the city of Livingston. Very proud of our residents and our volunteers and for answering the call service. This took place at Memorial Park and included in the volunteers were some of my family members, some high school students and regular citizens from the city of Livingston. At this event, there were food boxes that were distributed, there were gift cards and there were also vaccines available for COVID-19. A couple of days later, on July 12th, I participated as a member of the stakeholder advisory committee for the Merced ESP, which basically we oversee the groundwater sustainability for Merced County, which is very important. I also participated in the, in a redistricting workshop provided by the Merced County Board of Supervisors. Very low turnout. There were two locations that participated in this workshop, one in Merced and one in Los Baños. Merced had roughly about seven to eight residents representing basically all of Merced County. And in Los Baños, I believe there were only two people. That means that nine, 10 people were representing all of Merced County that were present. I'm not sure if the word got out strong enough to be able to have residents be aware of these workshops. The input is needed and important for Merced County residents. And all of those residents, including the residents of Livingston, need to understand how it can affect our community and how it can be represented or misrepresented. And one of the other concerns that I brought to the Board of Supervisors was that part of the workshops that were, or that are going to be offered for the redistricting are at 10 o'clock in the morning during the working out. With that, with that time in mind, we're expecting a lower turnout. So I requested the Board of Supervisors to reconsider and move those workshops in the afternoon at 6:00 or 7:00 o'clock. But at the time, some of the workshops are going to be held at 10, in the morning. Also, one of the last items, and this was something. Also, one of the last items, and this was something that was previously mentioned, the soccer assessment. I wanna give a big shout out and thank you to the ones who answered also the call to volunteer, to the teen advisory council members, the LHC students, and to my friend and coach, Mr. Francisco Hernandez, who is also a coach at Livingston High School, and to all of the other volunteers who participated in this great event. Thank you to the recreation commissioners who also participated and made this happen. And that is the end of my report.
Councilmember Maria Soto?
I recently attended the MCAG meeting held in, at the Atwater Chamber this past July 15th. I also sat in with the chief and Lippi Matlock to see about bringing a police activities league to Livingston. However, we have some discussion we still need to go through and possibly take a different direction. The 9th, I attended a event put on by the Rotary Community Corps. And really excited to report that out because they do have some activities and events that they would like to present and bring to Livingston involving many of our youth and the women in the community. We also held a camp for Livingston youth football. There will be another camp this Saturday and it's open to all youth ages 6 to 14 with their age meeting, the eighth grade requirement. So it is open. It's a free camp just to try out some skills in football if they don't, haven't already played. It's not a skills assessment. It's just to get them involved in the program. Veterans will be having their hamburger night next Thursday and it's been a great turnout. So thank you for those of you that participate and come, come out to the veterans' events. And that's about all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pretem Garcia?
I don't have anything to report at this time.
All right, thank you. Now we go to mayor announcements and reports. I'll keep it short. Also attended the UFW Foundation food box and gift card giveaway. It was a great event, well attended. Big shout out to David Hernandez, the one that actually organized it and came through and, you know, assisted our residents with, with great support. It was a great event and there'll be more coming. Also attended a Zoom meeting with the Merced County Indian Chamber of Commerce along with mayor from Merced and mayor from Atwater. Great conversation. A big shout out to the rec commission commissioners for their, for their skills camp. I think it's gonna be a great, successful season with soccer and looking forward to the opening ceremonies for that. Also organizing a school supply drive. Flyers should be out there here probably tomorrow. You know, getting some businesses to be the drop off zones and then take it up to the 7th of August and then donate it to local schools or head starts. And I think that's it. I just attended my Livingston Volunteer Fire Company Business Meeting yesterday. And that's it for now. So we're gonna go ahead and move on to our consent agenda. Items on the consent calendar are considered routine or non-controversial and will be enacted by one vote unless separate actions requested by the city manager or city council member. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the city council or city manager request that specific items be removed. Council?
I move to approve.
We have a motion by councilmember Jose Moran. Do we have a second?
Yeah, a second.
Second by Mayor Pretem Garcia. Monica, could we get roll call, please?
Roll call. Councilmember Soto?
Yes.
Councilmember Moran?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Pretem Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Aguilar?
Yes.
Motion approved by a vote of 5-0.
We're gonna go ahead and move on to our discussion of potential action items. We have one item, which is discussion and direction on the city of Livingston traffic calming program.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and council. Staff has worked on a, you know, first of all, we want to appreciate the, the public for, you know, bringing this item to us. You know, there were, as the chief mentioned earlier today, Mrs. Lopez and many others were having a community traffic committee. And so that's one of the reasons why we moved forward and actually put together a traffic committee made up of some residents and our chief of police, public works director. And then that then, then there was additional input provided by the community. And so we, as staff, started putting together a traffic calming program. And so we had a town hall slash workshop. Really, it was really well attended and there was a lot of input. And so we finalized a draft. It's a draft that we were ready to present to council for adoption. However, there was a couple of items that we needed to get further direction from the council and from the public so that we can institute this traffic calming program. First is, is associated with, well, before I do that, let me just go through the program itself. So basically, the program and anyone who wants a copy of this, if the council adopts it, it goes through the definition, the purpose, the goals. We have sample petition letters in here, et cetera, and then the process. Now I would like to go into the areas where we need a little bit of direction from the council and the public. So if we complete a traffic calming installation application, it requires in here a certain percentage of adjacent property owners to, you know, that the person who's sending out the petition, going around getting the petition, what percentage of those adjacent property owners do they need to get signatures in order to start the process of, let's just have, give an example. Let's say they decided, you know what? They, I think we need a speed bump, as an example. Okay? Of course, they'll go through the process, meet with the traffic committee and stuff. But in order to start the process, how many adjacent property owners would they need to gather in order to continue with the process? We just put a percentage in here in terms of a placeholder and we put in here 75% of adjacent property owners. Please note that the signatures must be from property owners, not renters. Qualifying owners will only, will own a property that fronts or has a side yard. So again, we went extensively through this program. And where we're, where we need direction from council and the public is what percentage of adjacent property owners do they need? One, to keep this process going, initiating it. And then two, it is, you know, there comes a time when folks might, might want to remove the speed bump that's already there. Okay? And so what percentage of those individuals in that same corridor do you have to gather in order to initiate the removal of a speed bump? Okay? So any questions, council, from the public? I'm more than happy to.
Let's start with the council. Any initial questions, clarifications? No? All right. We'll take out to the public. Go ahead.
Colette Alvarez, PO Box 255, Livingston, California. You guys are so funny. How absurd. You're talking about putting 441, 2, and 3 bedroom apartments right, right behind the parking of City of Livingston, the Livingston High School, which would require widening Main Street 85 feet. So you're talking about taking away people's parking and maybe their yards and all of that. And you only looked at five intersections. Three of them over on the Hammett Highway interchange, one on Peach and Coming In, and one as you go out of town. Most of those have agriculture on the other side. You're saying, in this plan of all these apartments, you're saying, well, nobody's gonna be using the Witten Parkway Exchange. Nobody will be driving to drop off their children and getting on the highway that way. So we'll look at none of the traffic there. We don't know how many drivers potentially they are because we have no number of how many people will be in those houses. We're not looking at how many people might be driving down Main Street to go work at Foster Farms. We won't consider any of that. But now we'll spend $60,000 potentially every year to put in speed bumps to calm people. I mean, this is so backwards. Look at your general plan, your 1999 general plan. Has that been read for the, what the traffic should be? The city of Livingston has not done, when I read it, what the traffic should be for how they've been growing out. And it relies on a 1997, I think, I think it's the 1997 traffic plan. So spending more money to put in a speed bump when we do poor planning. And my issue is, I'm worried about children walking to school. I'm worrying about the traffic backing up. Under the current general plan, your traffic is to run on a loss level of C. That means the traffic is supposed to always be flowing through the intersections. There should be no wait. I've come before the city council several times and I've said, I'm worried about when people are getting in the highway, on the highway and how they were driving through Rancho's parking lot to avoid it. And people are driving in and cutting people off. People are running the red lights. I have a recommendation. How about if we start, instead of just putting in speed bumps, which I don't know how that would affect fire trucks. Turlock had a problem with that. We have our recreation department come in and work with our youth and we do some traffic education. We teach about, hey, kids, if a ball rolls out in the road, don't run after it. Stop, look and listen. And we do community services things. And then we put up signs, say, please drive slowly. And we start talking to our neighbors. And we say, hey, Livingston really messed up on their planning and they continue to mess up our traffic and they won't listen to the people. But maybe we can talk in our neighborhood and ask people to slow down. $60,000. We're talking about inflation. That might be enough for a traffic education law officer. I don't agree with this plan. I think it's premature. Read your general plan, see what it says first. 85 feet you're taking out on Main Street. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Good evening, council. Hilda Lopez. Those of us, the citizens that, you know, initiated this speed bump traffic committee thing are also actually very concerned about the children and their safety. It's not just about Main Street. It's not just about the widening of the street. There are issues that exist other than on Main Street and those issues are occurring within my neighborhood and various other neighborhoods based on those workshops that we had. To address the city managers' questions from earlier, that's actually something that was covered in the, in the workshop. You know, what percentage we would need to get those installed and what percentage we would need to get them removed. And so to reiterate my comments from the budget workshop, one thing that I'd like council to keep in mind is that Livingston is a highly renter population. So even for myself, when I went and canvassed the community, my own neighborhood to gather signatures for the petition for the speed bumps, I did, you know, I was very successful in reaching a lot of property owners, but there are a lot of renters as well. Particularly in my neighborhood, there is, it's a very large population of renters and many of those owner, property owners have never even stepped foot in those homes. They've bought them for the sole purpose of renting them. Nonetheless, those individuals are still part of our neighborhood and community and deserve to be represented. So I just ask that council keep that in mind as far as what percentage is needed to install the speed bumps. I had originally suggested 2%, but I realized that may be a little bit low. But for removing them, I wouldn't mind seeing something significantly higher. As Ms. Alvarez pointed out, you know, this is a significant cost that the city is going to invest into the safety of our community. So it would behoove us to set up safeguards to ensure that that money is not wasted. And it is going to be something that is going to serve our community for a long period of time.
So Mrs. Lopez and Mrs. Alvarez, they made mention to 60,000. The 60,000 council approved in this budget fiscal year, approved $60,000 for traffic calming measures. Okay? So next year, council would have to look at appropriating the same amount of money or more money or less money. That's really a council decision. And then this document, you know, we created it in order to help facilitate and move, you know, these issues that come up as it relates to traffic. And the council, you can actually modify this document however you want. So if you want staff to remove, that they don't have to be property owners, it can be a combination of both. That certainly is doable. And the percentage, again, it's really up to you guys.
Any other public comment regarding this item, regarding the questions asked?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Jason Roth. I know speed bumps will help. Have the city thought about in the busier corridors, especially with the expansion, Mrs. Alvarez spoke about those apartments, have they thought about speed lights or traffic lights down by the high school and the busier corridors of the city?
So absolutely. So this document that has, in the table of contents, if you look through there. So the process is that, we're talking about speed bumps, but in essence, we're talking about any type of traffic calming measures. And that's why there's, there's a process and the traffic committee will be able to talk to these petitioners, to these residents, and try to come up with solutions. And if the first solution doesn't work, they look at the second one until they get to the point where it looks, they're recommending a specific type of recommendation. So the $60,000 that has been set aside specifically for traffic calming measures is not just for speed bumps. And that's a very good question. So thank you.
Thank you, Jose. Thank you, council.
Any other questions? All right. So the two things, you want to pose a question again regarding the clarification?
Yeah, so the, the two is, how many, actually, there's three because Mrs. Lopez brought that up. Is number one, if you guys want to tackle one, that one's pretty easy, is can it be a combination of property owners and renters? Or do you just want to do property owners?
Counsel, any suggestions, comments regarding that?
Yes. May I?
Go ahead.
Thank, so, thank you to the residents for giving additional information for consideration while we're looking at this item. Understanding the large number of current residents are not the actual homeowners is very important. So I would consider a combination of, a percentage of homeowners and a percentage of renters to be included as part of the percentage required to be able to have this in their neighborhoods.
I would like to make one recommendation to make it easy for everybody. I would, I would recommend not to go, not to come up with percentages of property owners and renters, but more on, that it can be a combination of either or. And as long as it's a, you know, X percent that you choose, you move forward.
All right, thank you.
So Mr. Ramirez, under step three, that 1B, it says at least 75%, is that what we're going towards?
I just put that number as a placeholder, but you can choose and with the community to decide. Now, what's some of the background on this? Okay, so if you choose a small percentage, then, you know, you look, and by the way, we're talking about neighborhoods. We're not talking about, you know, the arterial streets and stuff like that that's coming into town. So they're specific neighborhoods. So you go around and you say, okay, what percentage of those people who live there? Because you want to also know, engage who in the community is in favor and who's not. Because if we start just putting traffic calming measures and speed bumps and lights and things of that nature, we, we can get, you know, the community, we'll, we'll have more problems. So it's best to at least have a threshold. So you guys decide what percentage you want to go for. That number, I just put it in there as a placeholder.
And then on, on six, under, what is that, four policy statements? It goes on to say that if, if the devices are installed, it will remove on-street parking spaces. So how is that gonna affect the, the property owner? If we're putting their parking spaces?
If we're removing their parking spaces?
Yes. So what, basically what it's saying, and again, there's a process, so there's going to be, uh, my direct staff, experts and, and community members, they're gonna hash all this stuff out before anything's actually implemented. But there will be occasions where certain type of traffic calming measures that are going to be recommended might take up a parking space. Again, and they're gonna look at that on a case-by-case basis, so, uh, it's not a blanket, um, you know, requirement.
Under the minimum qualifying criteria, it has, it has to have an existing speed limit of 25 miles? How is that gonna help all the speeding between, um, Dwight and Lincoln on Peach?
Uh, I would like to bunt that one over to, to staff because I am, my understanding is that, um, all the streets, okay, you know how out in the county, if there's no, there's no speed bu, no speed limit sign, it's 55. For our streets, it's 25. Am I correct, chief? Yeah. Okay, well, I answered the question.
So back to the original question, I think Councilmember Jose Moran was stated that it should be a combination of renter and, and owner.
And then you can come up with the percentage that you would like.
Okay. Mayor Potem Garcia, you were gonna state, say something? No?
The councilmember Moran already, um, talked about it. Thank you.
Okay. So yeah, I'm in, I'm also in agreement. I think it should be a combination of renter and owner, considering that there's a lot of rentals here in, in town, percentage-wise.
Yeah, so staff will make that change in the document. Did, do you guys have a percentage that you would like to, again, let me make sure that everybody's clear. The percentage that staff is asking for are approval signatures from adjacent property owners in that specific neighborhood as they go around getting, getting folks to sign a petition to initiate, you know, this, whatever the problem is, before the traffic committee, and then ultimately, uh, come up with some, some traffic calming measure solution.
Okay. I know, I know somebody who had gone out already, correct? And I don't know, based on your experience, what would you recommend? Like, let's, what's it, oh, you wanna come up here?
Uh, I think she said 2%.
Yeah, that was just the last time.
Of course, uh, staff wouldn't recommend that.
Yeah. Um, well, my neighborhood is very, our, our issue has been going on for quite some time, so I was extremely successful. Um, I counted the number of properties that either faced or had side property on my street, and there was a total of, uh, 38. And, um, I did receive multiple, uh, some households did provide multiple signatures, but it was pretty much, uh, close to 40 as well. But I would say, um, out of the 75% of households that were, I was able to speak to, I was, um, able to probably collect at least, you know, 90% of their signature, 95% of those 75 that I reached out to. So, um, I would say that 50% would be generous, um, but I, I'm not the expert, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Of course, council, this can always be modified if something is, is not working. If she mentioned 50%, why don't we do 51%? And, uh, see how it works out, and then we can always bring it back for council to, uh, make adjustments, yeah.
Yeah, that's okay. You guys okay with that? Sounds good.
And then the, the last one is on removing, and, and everybody I think is in agreement that it should be a higher number, can we stick to 75% on that one?
I'm okay with that. You guys okay? Councilmember Jose Moran, you okay with that?
Uh, yes, I'm okay with that.
And that is all. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much. So, um, do you just wanna explain a little bit about the process would be af, after this?
Yeah, so now, so once council adopts this, uh, anybody, any neighborhood that's having some type of traffic calming issues, you can basically, uh, can come in and get the program. We have all the diagrams in here, the petition, so you guys don't have to recreate anything, and you can start. And then that is then submitted to the traffic committee. The traffic committee will look at it, they'll look at different measures, and at the end of the day, they'll recommend, uh, a project and go from there.
Great. Awesome. Thank you. All right, at this time, we're gonna go ahead, uh, council, direction on future agenda items. Does anybody have any future agenda items?
Uh, I was gonna ask Legal, do we need to, um, adopt this one, a resident, um, a motion to adopt this document or just direction?
Just direction.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any future items, council? Councilmember Jose Moran, you have any future items?
Uh, no additional ones, to the ones that I have shared before.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, so we're gonna go ahead and adjourn our regular council meeting at 8:16 PM. We're gonna go ahead and go into our closed session regarding the two items. Um, I know, are we still gonna use the projector? We use a projector for our, Vanessa? We're gonna use our projector for negotiations?
Uh, I think...
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes? Hello?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, um, I'm just wondering, and in regard to, in previous occasions, not all, mm, documents have been brought back to the city from the different organizations. Are we gonna be able to discuss all of them from all different groups, or is there limited to one?
Um, the ones we, actually, you know what, um, since, specifically closed session, uh, I'm gonna call you on pigeon speaker right now, okay?
Okay.
All right, bye.
Mr. Mayor, I know that you're going into closed session. I made an offer to present as a witness when you're in closed session. Uh, may I inquire if the council intends to call upon me or any of my staff during closed session?
I would be interested.
But, no, we're not.
Okay. Thank you.